So, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, very much. We appreciate your time and all the information.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
I also just wanted to mention when you were talking about the design thinking, Joe, I think some of that also comes in, in the technology. So, business and technology is a different department. I just happened to be in one of their high school classrooms in January, and he was actually starting a whole class project on building a walking machine. And they were starting with just the idea of it, and they had to start from doing their own individual research, bringing it together as a group, and then they had to kind of work with it through all of their ideas together to come up with this walking machine. It's still a work in progress, but I think some of that stuff, it also was incorporated into those upper level tech classes, too. And can I just go right to the next agenda item here is Mr. Sirwicky. Oh, and I just wanted to mention, I think you know this, some of you mentioned it, but these are shortened versions of a longer version that was emailed to you on Saturday. There's a couple more videos and a little more in-depth for each of them. And Mr. Sirwicky is here representing the World Languages Department. And I will turn this over to him.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, everybody. My name is Brian Sirwicky. I am the Latin teacher and also the curriculum coordinator for the World Language Department. And I think I know pretty closely everybody here on the board. You know, it's great seeing Mrs. O'Whiterby at the musical the other day. I wished I could talk a little more, but my hands are a little tight. My daughter there, but I agree with you 100% of 100%. It was an amazing musical this year. And my daughter was just kind of dancing in the aisle. It was fantastic. So, I hope everyone got a chance to see it. You know, I was thinking, when I was driving down here tonight, that this is the third time I'm doing this World Languages review for the Board of Education. And through everything, through, you know, thick and thin, through tough financial times and the pandemic we've been through and everything. You know, with your support, we've always kind of, you know, reached further, tried to make progress and, you know, just always try to provide more opportunities for our students. And so, thank you for taking the time tonight to hear some of the developments that have happened in our department over the last five years and that we see moving forward as well. Like the rest of the school district, we try to be guided by some core values. And our core values are that we wish to make a positive impact on our students, to make them caring citizens in this global society we live in, to help make them lifelong learners, to inspire in them a love of learning languages and a love of other cultures throughout the world, and to use tools and to continue to add tools to our repertoire to help provide the best teaching and learning experiences for our students. I always thought one of the neatest things about being a language teacher is just being able to be with the students over so many years. We have teachers that work in the middle school through seventh and eighth grade, Mr. Mackey, Mrs. Hannan, Mrs. Rizzo, that works with them over a series of years. We have teachers that travel between the middle school and the high school, Mr. Mackey and Mrs. Hannan. And we have our teachers up at the high school as well, myself, Mrs. Hannan again, Mrs. Harriett, Mr. Mackey, Mrs. Ort. And we were very fortunate to have Mrs. Tent, who was an East Aurora graduate, fill in for Mrs. Ort for several years. She'll be moving along over the next year and will be teaching Spanish in Costa Rica. But she's been a wonderful, you know, teacher in our department. And for students to just, you know, make that transition from middle school to high school and then their first day of high school to see a familiar face. I think, you know, our teachers do a lot to not just be there academically for our students, but to be there emotionally and socially as well for our students. And to get to know them over such a long period of time, I feel that, you know, we have a deep appreciation for how fast that goes and also for every step along the way in that journey. We have, as I said, you know, Spanish seven and eight at the middle school and Latin seven and eight at the middle school. We have a full offering of Spanish classes at the high school, one, two, three, four, and AP Spanish five. Levels two, three, four, and five are Latin. Sometimes students start off without any previous experience in Latin, taking Latin two with a thorough review at the beginning of the year. And this year, this past year, the first time that we've offered German, we've taken advantage of our excellent science teacher, Randy Evans, who also has certification to teach German. And he is teaching a class that is focusing on the foundations of German that you need to kind of reach out if you are looking for a job in engineering or business or education and obviously, you know, with Mo locally, to look at those kinds of career pathways and make those kind of connections with Germany. As you see, we offer the highest level AP Spanish, AP Latin for our seniors. Also, several of our seniors take the club exam after they take their senior year of Spanish and are offered several college credits for that in Spanish. In Latin, three and four, similar to what Mrs. Marchioli said, sorry, it's Marchioli. What Mrs. Marchioli said, we offer a SUNY college credit, which is very valuable to the students. They are able to use that college credit in any other SUNY school as well as many private schools. I had a student contact me who went to school all the way in California. And once she got that SUNY transcript that she got from her language class here at the high school, they exempted her from the language requirements there in California. So, it's a great opportunity for students in addition to the AP and the club and the other forms of college credit that students could get. There have been a lot of new changes, a lot of new developments in the language department. We have new world language standards that were just adopted this year by the New York State Department of Education. I assisted in helping, you know, put together those language standards over the course of the last couple of years. And basically, they take the traditional, without going into too much detail, they take the traditional two language standards of language and culture and divide it into a group of several subsections, which are more along the line of what has always been the world language standards, the national world language standards. So, they take a language and divide it into three subsections of interpretive communication, interpersonal communication, and presentation of communication. And then they take the culture section and divide it into the subsections of practices, products, perspectives, and comparisons. And, you know, like I said, without going into too much detail, you could see the emphasis there on both how the importance of using the language and also making connections between, you know, what we already know about our own language and culture and what we could learn from other languages and look at our own language and culture from new perspectives. We've also offered some new electives up here at the high school. This year, students can sign up if they want to for next year for a class called Spanish Around the World at the High School or Classical Roots up at the High School. These are language classes that don't have any prerequisites. So, there are so many classes at the high school that have these prerequisites. But this gives students an opportunity who may have been taking, say, Latin for five years to get a little exposure to Spanish or vice versa. Students who have been taking Spanish for five years to get a little, you know, exposure to Latin and perhaps to help them with SATs or to look towards the future in terms of different professions or skills such as that. In, you know, trying to think, in addition, it provides a language opportunity for the students to continue their language studies without sometimes being weighted down by the traditional grammar vocabulary that's usually associated with the language class. Finally, we've been working with Mr. Moore as well, trying to provide an opportunity for students to have a seal of bilinguality this upcoming year and especially for next year. The state initiated the sealed bilinguality program a couple of years ago, where students could receive special recognition on their high school diploma about taking advanced language classes in addition to taking advanced English classes. And, you know, we've always felt kind of prohibited from joining in on this because a lot of it was determined by an AP exam, which students don't get the result of until the summer after their senior year. But Mrs. Harriett, Mr. Moore, and myself did some research this summer, and we discovered that if the students put together this culminating project in either their junior or their senior year, and presented in front of a committee of guidance counselors, language teachers, English teachers, and administrators, that they can meet those requirements before they get that, you know, result from their AP exam. So, they'll have that under their belt to be approved for that seal of bilinguality. So, we have a few seniors this year. So, hopefully, you know, we might have a chance to graduate some seniors this June, possibly with a seal of bilinguality. And certainly, we have more juniors that are interested as well in meeting these requirements before they become seniors next year. Our department highlights, we have excellent clubs, and I'm actually going to come back to the clubs as well. At the middle school and high school, we have an international club at the middle school, which does a lot of different Spanish activities with students. We have a Latin club at the middle school as well. We have a Latin club up here at the high school. It was excellent earlier this year. It's proud to take kind of a traditional field trip to the, trying to think, to the Sculpture Park, the Griffith Sculpture Park, which was kind of a neat thing to just get on a bus and go back to kind of those normal things we would do in school. We put together a huge statewide competition. We've hosted the competition before in person, but over the last couple of years, we've been able to put this competition together just online using Zoom or Google Meet and have a lot more schools participate all the way from New York City or Skinny Evans or Saratoga and different places. And, you know, it's funny, because Mrs. Harriett and I, we always take these trips every couple of years. And we got trips lined up for 2020, which clearly got canceled. But it's an excellent, just an amazing opportunity to, you know, at least inspire in the students this desire to travel and to see the world. I remember seeing a commercial during the Super Bowl. It was an Expedia commercial, I think, that said, you know, you never look back and you wish that you bought just another widescreen TV or that newest smartphone. But you will want to look back and wish that you, you know, took advantage of an opportunity or an experience or something that you'll always remember. And so, you know, those trips can be transformative. And, you know, many of you have kind of participated on some of them. And so, we're looking to hopefully get that back online as we are navigating our way, hopefully seeing the light at the end of tunnel here. And we also have national honor societies, both up at the high school for Latin and for Spanish, that also provide students with an extra recognition for their advanced language studies. The two areas of need that I will recommend in the presentation tonight, the first one, the Spanish teachers have been working very hard on adopting a new textbook series. The current textbooks that the Spanish teachers are using, Avant Semos, is actually going out of publication. And the publishing company is not replacing it. They're not purchasing any new Spanish books. So, they've been on a research kind of investigation, looking into all different options of how best to replace this curriculum that we've really kind of relied on for decades now. And so, they boiled it down to two different books that are two different programs that they're looking at, that they're choosing between. One is called Somos, and it provides a lot of different online material. So, it's kind of shifting that focus from that traditional physical textbook to more of an online platform for the students. And so, we're looking into that more deeply and going to be working with, you know, the technology department and seeing, you know, what opportunities, what functionalities that if we adopted such a program, if we could, you know, have the students interact with it, being in compliance with all the NTV laws and everything that's required. And the other book that they're narrowed it down to is a book called Encantros, I'm trying to pronounce that, Encantros, which is more of the traditional textbook. There is a regular textbook that comes with it. There are some online resources that are available to the teachers. And then there are some workbooks that the teachers really think are beneficial for the students. And so, over the course of the spring, we are continuing to do research and will probably make a recommendation to the board within the next couple of months of which one of those two books or which one of those two programs we see going forward. And when we do that, we will do that at a level-by-level basis. So, we would adopt it just for the level one classes, you know, integrated into that program as those students move up different levels to, if it's working certainly, to continue to adopt it at those higher levels rather than purchasing an entire program all at once. And the other recommendation that we have is a discussion, just going back, you know, actually, it was, I think, six years ago, where we were talking about expanding foreign language programs to the fifth and sixth grade. I've had meetings with Mr. Brown, and one of the things that we run into and one of the things that you brought up in the last presentation was all of the mandates that are kind of required now and how basically the sixth grader's schedule is completely booked. You know, there's everything that the sixth grader does throughout their day, every minute, is completely mandated by the state. And then there are other programs in the fifth grade that are also, you know, very beneficial programs that we wouldn't want to, you know, kind of adjust at this time. So, the solution that Mr. Brown and I kind of suggested was possibly coming up with, as I was saying, those middle school clubs that Mrs. Rizzo, Mrs. Hannan run are excellent clubs. You know, they do such outstanding crafts with the students. They're doing something different every other week. They're putting together, like I said, these statewide competitions, these field trips, these different opportunities for the students. So, to put in a club during ELT time that is specifically designated just for fifth and sixth graders, because obviously, some of the eighth graders who are already taking new language, they benefit from the particular things that the seventh and eighth grade club does. But a club designed for people who don't have any background in the language yet, that would teach them lessons, basic foundational things, that would provide them with the benefits that we know that is available for offering languages at younger ages, cognitive benefits, creative benefits, you know, all kinds of executive function benefits, all of these benefits that we know taking a second language has, providing those benefits for fifth and sixth graders through different foundational kind of teachings to them and also providing them a foundation for that further language study in seventh and eighth grade. You know, it seems that there's to be, we were talking before, like a little bit of a gap there at the current time, because we know that there are language clubs that are available to students at Parkdale. And then students take language for every single day in seventh and eighth grade. So, we have this hiatus in the fifth and sixth grade where they don't have the language clubs they had at Parkdale, yet they have to choose a language that they sometimes have to take for six years or they commit to for six years in seventh grade. So, this helps bridge that gap. And it also provides them with kind of a context of knowledge to make a more knowledgeable decision about, you know, in sixth grade, what language they want to sometimes make that six-year commitment to. So, it would be a great club, and it would be an easy kind of thing to put in during ELT time, an easy offering for the fifth and sixth graders. That would be inexpensive. And as I said, Mrs. Hannan has already kind of volunteered. She would be happy to do a club like that. And she would do both Spanish and Latin. You know, she already has a slew of different activities and crafts for Latin. And she would lean on Mrs. Rizzo to get different activities and things and teach them some of those foundational things like colors and numbers and bridge that gap between the language clubs that they're taking at Parkdale to the actual language that they're taking in the seventh and eighth grade. So, those are our two recommendations about the textbooks and the clubs. And that pretty much wraps it up. Thank you so much for your time tonight and for taking time to, and I'm open to any questions that you guys have and happy to answer any.
Thank you, Mr. Sirwicky. Questions or comments for your members?
I just have one question, Mrs. Sirwicky.
Yes.
I do believe this year is the first year that you're offering German language conversational and reading skills, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, it is.
How was the interest in that class?
Yeah, it's going well. I mean, I think scheduling is always an issue at the high school. And then on top of that, you know, the teacher that we're fortunate enough to have teach it is also the science teacher. So, his schedule is a little busy as well. I believe, I'm trying to think, there is a good half dozen or so students right now in the class that will take me it pretty regularly. And like I said, it's a great opportunity. It's mostly designed as kind of an elective class for upper level students. It's not the traditional language class where you could just begin German in ninth grade and get like a full sequence in it. But, you know, like the fifth and sixth grade club that I mentioned, it's also a way just to kind of open the door, to kind of test that interest and to see, you know, if we can get like a larger kind of interest and a larger kind of program going. You know, I remember, well, when I started teaching here, you know, 15 years ago, I think I only started with some six students in the Latin class, you know, this girl. Since then, so you never know.
Yeah, no, thank you. I appreciate that. I was hoping that it would have a good interest because we used to have German here.
Yes, that was always been a lot of support in our community for a German program and not just because of, you know, the Moog and, but just kind of local community interest. I think there's always been support for that.
Right. Thank you. It was a great presentation, as usual. Thank you, Mr. Sirwicky.
Yeah, Brian, I was glad to see that you included German also, especially with our emphasis on STEM. A number of kids going into engineering is absolutely essential. And I would be 100% behind doing something in middle school with ELT time to introduce those, because that is kind of a gap. It always has been. And anytime you get your textbooks ready, just bring them in the textbook.
Thank you.
Mr. Brenson.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Sirwicky. The, I remember a time when we had a business teacher here who spoke fluent Italian and would occasionally do a one-shot elective in Italian for students. We had another teacher who was a Latin teacher who spoke Italian as well. So, we were very lucky to have these folks who are multi-talented. And a Spanish teacher who was fluent in Russian. So, then we had a Russian class occasionally. So, I commend you for looking for ways of broadening students' opportunity to explore, not necessarily develop a full facility in the language, but to explore these different cultural aspects and see how the wide world. I regret that we no longer have our Chinese exchange teacher. Perhaps something like that could be in the future as well. So, thank you for your presentation. And whatever we can do to broaden people's understanding of world cultures is a good thing.
Thank you for giving us all the information and giving us new ideas to contemplate. Thanks for keeping us moving forward and giving more and more opportunities to the kids.
Thank you for your time and your support. And thank you, Mrs. Lyons, for working with me through this process, which has been a little different now than previous times. Thank you.
Mr. Sirwicky, before you go, I just want to say thank you. You always do an excellent job of, you know, keeping us up to date, sharing your new ideas and thoughts that not only you, but all the language teachers have. And so, we're really grateful for your efforts in the presentation today. It always gives us some food for thought as we move forward, you know, in search of always improving our programs and the opportunities for our kids. And I'd also like to thank the group from CTE again on an innovation. We appreciate that creativity. That's what keeps learning interesting and our students engaged. And so, all of you are doing a really fantastic job. We're grateful for that. Thank you.
I'm done. Thank you very much for listening. I think it's all really great, important things. And they're all doing some great things at all the different buildings.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Mr. Sirwicky, I hear the Coliseum is a big hit. So, you know, feel free to share our pictures as it develops. That's very cool. Yes. I think we're going to take just a short break, folks. Three minutes? Yes, I think we're going to take just a short break, folks. Three minutes?
Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to N T, new courses and changes to the high school course catalog. Mr. Roberts?
Good evening. My colleagues thought that I was not going to have any announcements about the high school, but I've been taking advantage of being at the mic now just to say a few things. I had asked Mr. Cummins specifically how many students were involved in the musical because one of the best parts of the show is the end when they're all on stage. And there were 90 students involved this year. So wonderful that the directors create that environment that can convince 90 kids to spend months of tireless work for those three productions. So Terry, thank you for the kind words. And then the last announcement about the high school. So traditionally this time of year, we would have a snowball dance. And obviously, we've recreated these events over the last couple of years. And so the week after our winter recess, we have a series of events to replace what would traditionally be that snowball dance. On Tuesday, we're doing grades nine through 12, can go to get air. On Thursday, we're doing a grades nine through 11 winter fest, which is similar to what we did last year, outdoor activities, bonfire, a nature walk led by Mr. Shali, spike ball, can, jam, hot chocolate with the support from our PTO. And then new this year on Saturday, when we come back, I believe it's the fifth, our seniors are going to spend the evening at the Bill's Fieldhouse and have food and music and inflatable activities and flag football and ultimate frisbee and just have an evening together. So we're looking forward to, again, a new way of doing snowball. Maybe this is the last year we have to recreate the snowball dance in a different way, but it should be a fun week. So I wanted to let you know that in case you hear of those exciting events when we come back for break. All right, so shifting gears, you should have received a copy of the course catalog. And then, did you receive the one sheet with the changes in the course catalog? Or do you need that? You've got it. Perfect. All right, so about a month ago, I charged the departments to start reviewing the course catalog as we always do, although I think we're a little earlier this year, which is going to be helpful. After the individual members of the departments do their review, then it goes to a department meeting. And then the department chairs, example of Brian Suriki, would sit down with me and we'd look at recommendations for the following school year. And those we're bringing you to, bringing those to tonight. And I think I'm proud again this year that the reason that these improvements are being proposed are, number one, student interest always drives this annual review. And also the teachers being invested in offering courses that are preparing our students to be successful in their next stage in life, whether that's college or career. So you're going to see that in the, what I would say is a brief list of recommendations for the 22, 23 school year. I'm going to go through the one sheet with you and I'll reference the pages within the 60-some pages of the course catalog. So you just sat through a wonderful presentation from the business department. And you can see that there are some changes that they would like to make. Two specific to the course catalog would be the addition of a new accounting two class. Lisa had as successful an accounting one group as we've had in a long time. And she wants to offer them, because of that interest, an accounting two. Many of those students looking at careers in accounting or financial-based careers. So it really makes sense to offer that opportunity to them. And then the second one, and I heard this over and over again during the presentation, is that project management, that experience in project management. So Lisa has proposed a project management course. And again, looking at career skills that exist in so many different fields. And we're looking forward to incorporating that into our business course offerings. The, I'm excited about the next reintroduction, I'll say, to our course catalog, music theory and beginning guitar. And we haven't had either of those courses in the last couple of years. And as we've talked about, we have the active course catalog and then we have the archived course catalog. These came out of the archives and we brought them back. And I wanted to let you know that we're offering them to our students. Music Theory One is a number of students who are interested in furthering their study of music. And we think that this is an important course for them to take to be successful, to make that next step. And the beginning guitar is, again, a student interest. A student interest in many students who are interested in this are not necessarily kids that you would have seen on the stage of the musical. But music is important in their lives and beginning guitar is something that they've been asking for. So the schedule's going to allow for us to bring those back, both of those half-year courses for next year. So physical education, I think every year, I'd say the last two or three years, I've been bringing proposals for new physical education classes. Two, three years ago, we offered physical education nine, 10, and physical education 11, 12. I think this course that I'm proposing tonight is the fourth of a series of new physical education choices for students. So we offer standard physical education and then we offer four other specific topics within physical education. This one being fitness-based. And the reason we're able to do this is because of the beautiful fitness center that we have, support from you and from the Educational Foundation, and the popularity in being in that room. If you're here after school, we've talked a number of times about Mr. Gueye and the students that are interested in using the fitness center after school. And we're going to take that to the next level and actually offer this as a physical education course called Fitness-Based Physical Education. And then the second change within physical education is the evolution of the athletic physical education. When we had our budget crisis a number of years ago, we were allowing athletes to use their participation in athletics for physical education credit. And with the idea that as we increased our sections of physical education, we would slowly pull back on that opportunity because we do believe we're offering great physical education opportunities for our students. So we went from allowing two sport athletes two years ago and many years prior to that, to this year allowing three sport athletes to use their athletics as their physical education credit. The proposal for next year is to maintain that expectation of three sport athletes only. But it will be three sport athletes who do not have study halls that will be allowed to use the athletics for their physical education credit. If they have a study hall, or excuse me, multiple study halls, then we're going to try and schedule them in for a physical education class. We're truly talking right now of about 15 students. We think with this new change, it'll maybe cut that in half. So not talking about a lot of students, but we think that that's a nice middle ground. And then the last specific change to the course catalog is within technology. Again, this is in response to student interest. We ran an engines one course this year, tremendous success. If you, after the meeting, go check out the lab, you'll see engines of all types scattered around Mr. Cray's room. And the students have interest in enhancing that area of study. So we're going to propose an engines two course for next year. So those are the things that I'm prepared to propose to you right now for specific changes for the course catalog. But I will say that there's a chance that we may come back to you in the next couple of months with two other proposals. And I wanted to put these here because it may be in the next couple of months or it quite possibly might be the fall or next year. But these are two things that we're examining at this time. One of them, Lisa Marchioli mentioned, that idea of a new requirement of personal finance. And as a half-year course, we would piggyback that with the success of our Health and Society class. These courses would complement one another. So we're going to have to work with meshing the curriculum and also taking some time to look at how we're going to effectively schedule these courses and adding, as we've mentioned, an additional requirement. And the reality of fitting that into all of our seniors' schedules is not realistic. So we're looking at this may need to be a junior, senior requirement. And we're going to have to look at, even with that said, how many kids cannot fit that in their schedule and what we would do with that. So there are some barriers and we're going to spend some time examining those over the next couple of weeks, couple of months. We'll see if that's a proposal for this coming school year, 22, 23, or maybe 23, 24. But we'll bring that to you, obviously, before that decision is made. And then the second thing I wanted to have on your radar, and I apologize for the lack of name, but we were introduced to a program that I believe started in a school in Wisconsin. And now our friends in Alden, in 2019, implemented this program. We've gone to visit them twice in the last month. And we're really excited about the possibilities of EA Designs or an EA Manufacturing or an EA Productions, you can pick which one you like there, program. And this would be a collaboration between our business department and our technology department. We are looking at something that would resemble something like the Film Academy or Global Leadership Academy. So a two-to-three period sequence at the end of the day. And when we went to Alden, the students are divided into different components of a business. And there are students that work in business administration, they work in a sales department, they work in consumer products department, manufacturing department, and marketing departments. And they are creating products for their school, for their community. And it is an incredible display of leadership among what is traditionally for 11th and 12th graders. There's internship opportunities, work-based learning opportunities. It's real-life experiences. It's applying all those skills that they have learned here at East Shore High School in our business and technology departments and putting them to work. And this is something that we're going to spend some more time evaluating. But these are between the Health and Society, Personal Finance requirement and the EA Manufacturing concept. These are two programs that really, I think, are getting our faculty excited. And I think that our students are going to just jump at the opportunity to add this to their experience with us as well. My plan for both Health and Society and Personal Finance requirement and the EA Manufacturing program is to formalize a presentation that we would bring to you before moving forward with either of those programs. But I wanted to let you know that those are things that we're considering, possibly as soon as next year. But definitely, moving forward, we're going to pursue these at some time.
Thank you very much. Questions? Mr. Roberts, the other pathway, the EA Designs, manufacturing, production, would that be a one-year like Film Academy or more like a two-year like Global Leadership?
So what we've observed at Alden, because the leadership is such an important component to that program, that ideally the students would do that in 11th and 12th grade. They would learn the ropes as the 11th graders and then take on leadership roles ahead of a sales team, ahead of the marketing team, ahead of the manufacturing team as a senior. So ideally, it's a two-year program.
That makes more sense. And you know how I feel about the personal finance. Thank you. Even if it doesn't make it for the upcoming year, the fact that it's going to make it shortly thereafter, I mean, that's great. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, and I agree on the personal finance. I think that's fantastic.
So so when my daughter did Construction Tech over at Ormsby, she went through the Money Skill Program over there and she absolutely loved it. She found it to be a fantastic thing. And and so I'm glad to hear that we'll have something probably even broader and more in depth than that. The athletic physical education, is that something that is offered in 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 other districts? Is that something that's that's unique to us? And I ask that because I'm wondering, are there are there standards that we have to go by or do we develop our own?
There are state standards that we're meeting. But this program specifically is very unique to us.
It's great. And my other question on it is, is it is it athletics that are specifically tied to the district? Or if it's or if they're involved in a team that's not offered through the district, does that count towards that?
So there's there's two different pathways there. There is an opportunity for students to use athletic participation outside of the district for physical education credit. But the state has different criteria that need to be met. What we typically find is it's difficult for that facility to meet the state expectations for us to issue credit for that participation. But it is possible. We traditionally have had one or two students who who can meet the requirements to our credit. And that is not decided by us. It's that that's a state requirement.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Mr. Roberts, I appreciate that the opportunity still exists for students who have very, very tight schedules. And that's that's fantastic. And I also very much appreciate the ongoing efforts to continue to expand the physical education program. So it truly is an opportunity for all students to learn to appreciate the physical aspect and the the long-term benefits and health and well-being and all that. I think back to a number of decades ago when gym class was for filing your fingernails if you didn't enjoy what was going on versus now when there are so many opportunities. Thank you for the ongoing efforts to continue to make that an exciting and interesting area for growth.
And with that said, if you don't mind, we're approaching, and I think we will next year, where we have just as many of these specific elective physical education courses as we do the standard physical education course. So it truly has been something that students have appreciated.
That's fantastic. You may be reaching the point where they have after actually decide between the options that appeal to them. That's very exciting.
Other board members with comments or questions for Mr. Roberts? Thank you very much.
I'll just say before he goes, I think the VISAD is a good example of the restorations we've gone through. I don't want to present the budget in just a second, but I think this is a really good example. So we always drew the the cuts through the GEA. It kind of cut across all subject areas. And PE was one of the last ones that we looked at to cut. And we we started doing some research on alternatives because we were kind of forced to, knowing that we wanted to go back to more of a typical model. I think it gave the department an opportunity to think kind of outside of the box. As we started to restore the program, how can it look differently? I think they've done a brilliant job creating options for our students. VISAD can be really great, but it also can be challenging for certain students. And so when we have options to look at individual activities or group activities and make that choice, it just is a much more engaging process. And then for those students, some of our students are are jam packed all day long. They take independent studies because they can't fit them into their schedule. Sometimes that alternative to take that PE course and take a study hall, a study hall instead, gives them some relief during that school day to do some homework, catch up on some other things that are related to their other courses. So I think it's a really nice balance that we found. As we swung one way, we were bringing it back through that restoration process, it's really found a nice middle. And I think the program is even that much better. So congratulations to everyone who was involved and I appreciate their creativity and and just, you know, creating new opportunities for our kids. I think that's really what's most important.
Thank you. We are moving on to the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school district budget.
Well, welcome and thank everyone for sticking around. I know it's been a a long evening, but a lot of great presentations. And and a lot of what drives those opportunities is our budget. And the board works really hard on this every year. I appreciate your support and input and all the members of 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 the organization, our administrators, our teachers, our staff. Everybody kicks in to make this thing work and so really grateful for that. So we'll get started. On sort of agenda and and we'll get through this as quickly as possible. We'll talk about the values and vision quickly, kind of the guiding force for what we do. Our Budget Finance Committee meets at least once or twice a month, starting in the fall in preparation for developing the budget. And so we have some really good conversations. We'll discuss that briefly. And then the budget development considerations, we look look quickly at the federal stimulus, reserve funds, state aid, budget priorities and the tax cap and rate, look at per pupil expenditures, calendar, where do we go from here? And we'll have a discussion at at the end. So here it is, and I think we all, we attended the Leadership Institute at Disney, a number of the administrators. And that really led to the new branding of the district as well as the development of our values and our vision as well. So here it is. Again, the values and vision were created about six or seven years ago. It was during the GEA, we were struggling, cutting lots of programs and some opportunities for our kids that were changing. So we really needed to look at a way to kind of restore and and think about things in a different way. And the values and vision have really guided us through that. I think it's been an incredibly important process. And again, like as Mr. Roberts was saying, the development of that catalog is a good example of how we continue to be creative. Our teachers are always thinking of new ways and new ideas around the interests of our students. And the values and vision really provide that platform for us. So again, we're, you know, we're committed to first and foremost, our students and doing what's in their best interest. Secondly is to our community and making sure that we are using the resources they provide us in in a very positive and effective way. We're committed to conducting our business in open and objective manner. We do lots of these presentations and it's available to our community. And we also share it in other ways through other committees that we have. And then again, we're committed to constant improvement and that again is based on the values and vision that we've developed for the district. So here's the budget and Finance Committee, and I won't go through it, it's kind of late, but you can see we started all the way back in October. So there's a lot of planning involved. We look at a lot of background information. Mrs. George does an excellent job providing us with updates at each and every one of these meetings. It serves it serves up kind of slowly because we don't receive as much information from the state at that time. But you can see all the different topics that we do discuss. And it really helps when we come in December and we do our initial presentation of the budget, which is pretty basic. But it kind of gets us started for the budget season in January. All right, here it is again. We met in in January. And then we just met on the seventh of February. And then we have meetings again at the end of February, March fourteenth and March twenty-eighth, so right now. So again, we've got the tricky challenge, triangle of budgeting. We start off by establishing and adjusting goals and visions for the year. We identify our priorities from that. And then from there, we say, okay, how do we balance and trade off? You know, we have to look at what are we interested in doing? The new courses we're interested in, new opportunities for our kids K to twelve. How do we afford to do that? You know, how do we look at, as Mr. Roberts mentioned earlier, you know, balancing reasonable levy and tax rates and establishing programs and then maintaining what we already have in place. So it is a bit of a juggling act and then we kind of do it back and forth. We work as a team and that's when we come up with final presentations for the board. So we look at, again, where are we getting our money from? The federal stimulus has been really, really positive, a little over three million dollars coming to us over the next three years. So where are we going to be using this? And we 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 decided initially, we thought we might need around fifteen positions. And so we we filled we filled ten of them so far. And so that's been a very positive thing. A lot of that has been around social work, mental health, those types of supports for kids. A behavioral specialist is off to a fantastic start. We received thank yous from some of our teachers in regard to the work that she has done just over the last two weeks that she has started. So there's a lot of positive things happening there. Yeah, we're looking at technology, the summer sales camp, we we ran it this year, which really was successful. We offered it up to an identified group at first. And then after that, we opened it up to all students. And so we're planning on running that again this summer. We have tutoring services for those kids who need some extra support. Professional development, again, around some of the technologies, the new ways of instructing and also providing support for teachers as they go through this process and learning new techniques to support our kids, especially through over the last two years. UPK Transportation, we were really fortunate to be able to get a UPK grant. We established three sections, one within the district and two at the East Shore Community Nursery. Again, it's successful. Mrs. Marinaccio did a fantastic job pulling it together in like three months. And so usually that doesn't happen, but it did, and it's been very, very positive for us. Next year, what we're going to be doing is we're going to actually be having two UPK campus and one at the East Shore Community Nursery. Supposedly, we're supposed to be getting additional pre-K money, but we haven't heard that yet. So maybe in the next year or two, that will happen. I have materials and supplies, you know, they've been really, really, really tight over the last several years. And we're hoping to be able to support the buildings in a better way in that regard. We thought the E-Academy, we may need some slots there, and I think that was for ten slots. But we didn't use any. So we have that money so that can be reallocated. And so what we'll do is we'll file amendment in regard to our federal stimulus to be able to use that hundred and sixty thousand dollars in another area. Yep, here's the reserves. Again, another area that we've really been focused on because during the GEA, we had to pretty much deplete our reserves because of the funding loss that we had in order to maintain our programs. So over the last several years, let's say three or four or five, we've been slowly replenishing our reserves and things are looking really good. You can see, I'll just point out a few, is the EBLR moved up to about six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. And that that's a fund that helps us for those people that have retirement incentives. So that's a really important piece. TRS and ERS again, building those resources up as those, you know, it's been, that's been one area that's been really challenging because the TRS and ERS is really based on the performance of our stock market. So sometimes we think it's going to be really great. It turns out not to be that way. So we're not exactly sure how those calculations happen, but that helps us to have a kind of a cushion in case those dollars shoot up. Let's see, what else do we have here? Yeah, like technology, we started the technology reserve again because we have technology in place now, as I mentioned earlier, all the individually Chromebooks for all our students K to twelve, you know, and technology at the early ages is done in a in a in a way that is developmentally appropriate. But more and more, we're seeing kids who are interested in coming in with those skills when they come into kindergarten. And so we want to support that. And so that technology reserve will allow us to replenish Chromebooks in a timely fashion and other technologies that we have throughout the district. And yeah, so you see the capital reserve is a really good piece. As we talked about, we're going to be going out hopefully for a vote in December for our next facilities project. And that capital reserve will help us to 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 balance that out and create a project that is as impactful as possible, but also have the minimal impact as possible on the taxpayer. So the Governor's State Aid runs, here it is again, you know, one big, big positive thing about it is the foundation aid. You can see the dollar change is about one point one million. Unfortunately, this year, we've lost some aid in other categories. You can see in both seats, high cost access aid. Let's see, what else do we have? Software, transportation was another pretty big hit. And the reason for that is because we've used less of those services during the pandemic. So there's a direct relationship to the amount of money we're spending and the amount of money we're getting back. So it's offset by a year. So sometimes those things become a bit of a challenge to manage. But the foundation piece moving forward, as Mrs. George mentioned earlier too, we're getting some confirmation that it looks like it's going to be in place for the long run, which is really important for us for so many reasons related to ongoing costs, contractual issues, all those types of things. So the priorities, so we've been working on this and we've been working on this for years. As we've gone through the GEA, we had to to cut a lot of a lot of teaching positions and support positions. And then going through the restoration process of bringing those back slowly over time. This continues it. I mean, we are doing some additional expansion like in our STEAM area. You know, we're continuing to to push that with the donations that we received from some of our community members and trying to really maximize those opportunities. So you can see we're looking for a STEAM position at Parkdale that would be a full-time teacher that would be available to assist the gen ed teachers in regard to the incorporation of STEAM activities into their daily activities into their daily routine, excuse me. We need just some additional assistance in the area of ELA math. And that is basically speaking, you know, we have some extra students depending on an extra, an extra section in those two areas. So we need those and those those fluctuate every year. And we're thinking about, so where is it? In the middle school and then the first line in special education, related to the same thing. We have like ten sixth assignments right now because people are picking up those extra assignments. So now those those basically correlate to two teachers in both of those areas. So we're thinking about moving in that direction as well. And again, there's not a huge swing because we're we're paying those people to teach that sixth section so that when we incorporate five of them into one teacher, it kind of offsets each other. Another tech position at the middle school. Again, we with we have we save a retirement later on in our schedule that will go on shortly. So that will be kind of a replacement so that that's not necessarily an increased cost. Depending though also on some of the recommendations that they made today. So there may be some additional tech needs, so that may be there and may not. Let's see what else we have. Yep, so another, I was talking with Mrs. Marinaccio and we're really interested in looking at a blended integrated program for our second UPK section. So that would incorporate bringing students with special needs into that classroom and then providing special needs support through the school district. And we really feel that could be beneficial in terms of their long-term progress. So we're considering that as well. And then and then there would be a teacher aid associated with that as well because that that's required by the grant. We're looking into cyber insurance. We've heard of other school districts in our area with cyber attacks. So it's something that we really need to to focus on and establish within the district. Also, some of the authentications and stuff that go along with it, there's going to be some changes to our practices too to make it safer. The SRO, as I mentioned, we interviewed two SROs, two officers today. And so we're really excited. We're going to be making a decision within the next few days. And hopefully that person will be able to get started in the very near future. We're also looking for a second halftime SRO. And that would be somebody who would be stationed at the middle school and also work in at Parkdale as well. And we mentioned on the administrative side too, we're looking at cost because I'm still trying to figure this out, what it exactly will be for the assistant principal. Additional assistant principal, right now we have a point five principal at Parkdale, a point five principal in middle school. We did some research, the school's our size and pretty much across the board, everyone who responded, anyone who's in the five to six hundred range where we are, has an assistant principal. And I can share some additional details when we get to to that with the board. And then the athletics director, again, that's a replacement. We had an athletic director who was Mr. Lebrun. He's he moved over to be our assistant principal and he's doing just a fantastic job as our assistant principal. And what we what we see now is what's changed within the school and not only our district, but districts across the area is that, you know, we talked about in our last meeting, doing things around restorative practices, DEI, social emotional learning. Somebody needs to take care of those projects and take the take the lead on them. He's he's done a great job taking the lead, for instance, as our as our liaison with the the county during this COVID process. He works directly with the doctors, he keeps us informed. All those memos that I sent out, most of that information is coming through him and his relationship with the county. And so it takes a ton of time, but somebody has to do it. And so those are the kinds of things he does. In addition, they're working with the kids and observing teachers and everything else. So that assistant principal will allow us again to move those DEI restorative practices. Mr. Moore has been trained in restorative practices and that's what we're looking for when we bring in another assistant principal. On the athletic director side, as I mentioned, Mr. Lebrun used to be the athletic director. He decided to move over to the assistant principalship. And so today, Mr. Cassely was with us. He has graciously helped us out as a teacher on special assignment for the last two years. And during COVID, it has been incredibly challenging because sports, as you know, and athletics have an up and down, canceled, not canceled. And so it's been a really challenging process, but he's done a great job. But he's decided to go back to the classroom. So we'll be hiring a director to replace the one we used to have. And then the Capital Outlay Project, as you know, we do those every year because the funding comes back to us the next year. because the funding comes back to us the next year. So for us, we get back probably around $60,000 and $100,000 expenditure. So it's a nice repetitive thing that allows us to do improvements throughout the district. And so the tax levy limit calculation, I'm going to let Mrs. George kind of explain how the process works and where we're at, what's our limit for the upcoming school year.
I guess this slide is actually the calculation for our current year. And this is just what the calculation turns out to be. The pieces that are affecting our bottom line are our tax-based growth factor, which indicates, is indicative of new properties being built within our, within our boundaries and getting closer and closer with our capital exclusions, which are the color-coded, how they follow from one year to the next year. As those numbers become stable and more close to each other, then our, our tax levy limit becomes more predictable and more stable. So our calculation this year ends up at 3.08%. And it's just the calculation. No decisions have been made yet regarding what levy we will go out with. That will be coming in the future presentations and through development with the finance committee. And right along with it, I like to always show a history of our tax rates, what we thought they were going to be last year and where they really ended up. The thing of note on this slide is our equalized full value tax rate has actually decreased over the past three years by a total of about 74 cents. And that's how we equalize it between the different towns because the equalization rates are so different in each town.
And then just to look at per pupil expenditure, you know, we just take a look at this every year to see how we're doing in regard comparison, and how much money we're spending per student and kind of the bank for the buck that we're getting. You can see for us, gen ed's just a little bit over 8,000. Specialized is just a little bit over 28,000 for a total expenditure of 36,332. And when we compare that to similar districts, you know, we're considerably less because they're spending a little bit over 56,000. And then when we look at all New York State school districts, the total expenditure per pupil is on average 45,650. So again, we continue to be pretty conservative. You know, we're getting a lot for the money that we are spending. Our kids are doing well and having a lot of opportunities upon graduation. So the budget development calendar here, we've gotten through December 15th and January 27th. Today is February 16th. We'll continue to move on. We're going to submit the calculation for the tax cap levy limit. That doesn't mean that we have to go to 3.08. We'll make that decision when we have those discussions. We have a few more budget workshops coming up over March and that's, and April. That's when most of this will happen. We'll have revenues and expenditures. We'll have a lot of that tied down for you so that we can really make predictions on what, what positions we want to put into the, the budget for next year. The programs like Mr. Roberts talked about, which ones are we going to support? We've been talking about that health, health, additional health course and a personal finance for a while. But when we make things required, there's a number of challenges associated with that. And that really is part of the scheduling process is, is having everybody to get through it in the course of their junior or senior year, really add some challenges. But we're really hopeful that that will happen because we feel that those are real, two real life skill courses, you know, as kids are prepared to leave. And so the content they've been putting out, because it's been running as an elective the health course, and it's been really well received and, and really well developed. It's just a, a great course for our kids. And again, it's, it's kind of looking at all aspects of their health. You know, their, their physical health, their mental health and wellness. How do they function within the world? How do they prepare to go off to college? So those are all the types of things that they're talking about. Yeah, so then, you know, it's going to go quickly, right? We have March, we're on our break next week. When we come back, it'll be March. We've got a couple of budget workshops ahead of us, which I think we can tie up. Again, I think a lot of things are in place. Join continues to get additional information that will help us to make more accurate and detailed recommendations. And like we said, we'll, we'll start sharing more about the revenues and, and other elements of the budget in the next several meetings. And then there's just the standard stuff that we have to go through in terms of the budget submissions and, and making sure that things are done in time. And then we come to the 17th of May, and that's where the budget vote is. So, and hopefully by that time, it'll be spring and things will be good. So just any questions?
Looking at the middle school budget priorities on page, slides 12. Last, the last meeting, you had said you were hoping to make fifth and sixth because they are still considered to be elementary. Making each one have six sections, just like we have at Parkdale. Just, just, is that included in these budget priorities for the middle school?
Yeah, that's, that's what that is about. So, and so what we're doing is we're, we're almost positive we're going to do that for fifth grade. And then Mr. Brown is still working with the teachers on what that looks like for sixth grade. So we're thinking, do we do transition that over two years or do we do it all in one? And so that's still one of the things that we're talking about.
Thank you.
Hey, Brian. The official question for clarification. The, the federal stimulus amount of 3,123,000, does that merge all of the federal grants into that number? Or is that just one grant?
Yeah, that's what.
That's both Carissa, and there's two parts of that, gear and Esser.
Yep.
And then it is the IRV also.
So it's all added into that number?
Yeah, that's all the federal stimulus.
Okay, that's great. Thank you, Brian. Then more clarification, going to the budget priorities, are any of those positions being paid for or being paid out of the grant for the first couple of years? Are those like under the federal stimulus, as much as 15 positions? And then you've got some recommendations, kind of priorities. Are they two separate numbers or are they similar?
We are still looking into that because of some of the amendments, like the remote learning that we didn't need. We're still looking into how to make all that pay.
There are a lot to it, okay, that makes sense. And one position that sticks out a little bit is the SRO. I mean, if we, if we couldn't bite all that off of 2223, we could pay some of it out out of the grant and then move that, I mean, work that into our budget as well. This is a suggestion. I know it's an important piece for everyone here, but if it puts a lot of pressure on 2223, you could, you know, draw a little bit of that. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a great suggestion. And that's kind of what we're thinking is that, okay, so we, like we said, we had some additional monies left over because we're not using the slots in that specific program. How can we use that 160,000 in a different way? How do we file the amendment then to eventually blend that cost into the overall budget over the next three years? And so some of the positions that we help, but mostly around the social workers and the mental health aspects, we've been hiring school psychologists, social workers, counselors, and behavioral specialists. And so a lot of that money is blended. It, it's, Mr. has developed it over the next three years as this money will run out. How do we then sustain it? And then so, but it's not a perfect science yet, right? It's kind of a work in progress. It's a work in progress. So, and so some of these positions may also utilize some of that federal stimulus over the next year or two or three, depending on how the money kind of shakes out.
Whatever decisions made on that will allow us to address some of the priorities, whether it is negotiation issue or tax break, issue or levy, those kind of things. So those kind of things will be in place. Well, is that a March or March 10?
Yeah, hopefully, I would say it probably won't be in the first March meeting, but maybe in the second or third. I would like to have it tied up by the end of March for sure so that when we get into April, you know, that we have a pretty good picture about where the funding is going to be coming from to support the positions that we'll be moving forward with and, and what's kind of the long-term, long-term plan in terms of transitioning that into sustainability. And, and so some of the positions may not be needed. So some of the things that we've put in place is because we're responding to our kids' needs right now. Their immediate needs, both academically and socio-emotional. And so those might change. And as those change, we'll, we'll adjust the positions and, and do things differently based on their needs. So, yeah.
Mr. Cassidy?
Thanks. So the, the budget priorities, I remember from prior years, watching this, the, the presentations, a, a larger pool of priorities that were long, you know, you know, hoped to get in there over the course of three years. And then, and I assume what we're seeing here is, is what we're hoping to get in, in this year. Will we see that, that larger pool again and see how, how maybe some of those have been fulfilled throughout the year?
Yeah, so some of these things, we may not fulfill this year. So this is kind of a short-term, long-term priorities. Because what we're going to do is like what Paul's talking about, when we're looking to balance our, our, our needs in regard to the levy, our needs contractual obligations, and our needs to, to support programming and continue to improve programming. We'll be making adjustments and decisions about that. But what are our first priorities over the next weeks? And so like if we look at the STEAM, STEAM position has been on for a couple of years, but is that necessarily a priority over maybe the psychologist? No, it wouldn't be, right? And so that's the type of thing that we're going to decide. Like I said, over the next two to three weeks, four weeks, yeah. And so we'll narrow this list down. But then, like for instance, even in our discussions tonight, you know, we're talking about new programs. Okay, so how does that fit in? And if we can make the finance and the health course work, that might jump to the priority, top priority, because we've been wanting to do it. If you can do it from a scheduling perspective, then, then we might push it forward. But if not, then we'll hold off and put it in for the 2324 budget.
So lots of moving parts, lots of competing areas looking to get that same pool of money. The, the other thing was just on the fiscal stress score. I saw that on, on, on one of the slides, and I wasn't sure if we'd, we'd gotten that back yet this year or not, because I know that had been a focus in prior years. How we had brought that down just amazingly.
Yes, that is in your finance committee notes. And yes, we did get, it's always a year behind.
Yeah.
We have successfully had no designation for, I think it was three years now.
Thank you.
Mr. Cassidy, you bring up a good point. It may be helpful to include that in the public presentation just as a point of reference for the community. We may not need to spend a lot of time on it, but just to remind folks of, of where we were and where we've, where we've managed to recover. And it sounds like it may be requested whether board members have a wish to see prior years priority for reference. That might be helpful if we could go back to last year's and throw that in for comparison so that we can see where we are.
Sure.
Then do we think for the next meeting, I know you won't have everything buttoned down, but to give the board plenty of time to digest, would you be able to prioritize the priorities? Maybe even if we don't know exactly where the dollars are so we can get a sense of what the thinking is?
Yeah, I think we could certainly do that. That's kind of what we, it, it's, again, it's like, give you an example, if the two positions at the middle school, you know, we've kind of been back and forth on what direction we go with that. And then, so if we just had to hold off on sixth grade, then that may allow us to do something else. And so those are the types of things that we're tightening up right now. And again, trying to find balance between the three buildings, making sure they're all supported, getting these absolutely essential, you know, additional remedial support, areas of special needs, you know, those obviously have to come first. And then, you know, we determine from there, what other opportunities do we have? How can we change some of the courses, opportunities? And, and so it kind of ebbs and flows. But we should be able to tighten that up certainly. I don't even know when the next meeting is. Is it the 9th? Yeah, by, yeah, the 9th. Because we're away, so it doesn't give us a whole lot of time. But we should have, we should definitely have it tightened up by the 9th for sure. I don't know if it'll be the final report, but it'll be very close.
Other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. We are moving on to item F. Do we have further updates on the district Parkdale school?
Yeah, so I think, you know, in general, things are going well. You know, we're, we're making progress. We're really hopeful that we'll get some relief, you know, in regard to, I guess, impact a more typical environment. We'll have to see what the, what the governor says and what the directions show and how things go over the break and, and what comes of that in regard to like, you know, over the December break, we had a huge spike in, in cases when we came back. It's predicted that that's not going to happen. So we're, we're feeling good about that. I think it's going to allow the governor to move in a direction where she's able to ease up and give us some choices about how we move forward for the spring. So I think that's, that's very important. Things are going well, you know, we're preparing for assessments. You know, we have spring assessments coming up for three through eight. Hopefully, the regions are going to go. That's one thing we've been concerned about, and I think a high school did a fantastic job developing our own midterm exams because, you know, exams are, are one piece of our assessment, but it's an important piece. And so we haven't had any assessments in a number of semesters. And so there's just a lot of value for it in terms of giving feedback and data. That's one piece. But also just for the students who are, especially in the high school, or moving off to college, or having experience with those types of, of, of testing, you know, just for that personal experience. And so they did a great job developing a schedule that worked really well in the middle, at high school for midterms. The teachers felt good about it that they're getting some data and feedback on how their kids are doing, you know, what are the gaps? Because there definitely are some gaps that we're still working on. But I think that was a really positive approach. Things at the middle school in Parkdale, again, I think are going well. I think people are looking forward to the spring and some relief. I think they're looking forward to getting away next weekend. So I think we all need a break, and, you know, it is, it is stressful and, and challenging. There's no question about it. But it seems like things are improving, and I think that impacts people's mood and just the general feeling in, in each of the schools. I don't know if any of the principals or directors have anything they want to share. Yeah, so I think they're doing a great job. They have fantastic leadership, you know, providing support for our teachers and the support staff. Our kids feel supported, lots, a lot of creative solutions to those who are, who are having struggles and challenges. And so just very proud of what they're doing.
Very much. Can I ask a question? Brian? If, if the guidance comes out in, after February break, if the guidance changes as far as masks, where are we standing? Where do we stand with that? I know we're required to follow the guidance if something changes after February break.
Yeah, so if something changes after Feb. break, I think my suggestion would be that we continue to, you know, through this whole process, we, we follow the guidance, and it serves us well. If their kids save or our staff save, you know, we had no spread within the community. There's a number of people who are, who are ill, of course, but it wasn't because of school. And so we feel good about that. You know, the decisions made was a perfect, no, of course it wasn't. But I think if only guidance, it worked for us. And so that's what I would suggest, if, if we have the opportunity to make masks optional, that's, that would be my suggestion to the board and to our, to our administrators. And that would be my, what I share with parents. You know, of course, children who want to wear masks, wear masks, and those who choose not to would have that choice as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Item 10, is there any legislation to come before the board? Item 11, consensus items, may have a motion. I'm losing my mind. Okay. A motion to accept this consensus items. Thank you. Moved by Mr. Blowers. Discussion. All those in favor? Abstained? Opposed? Curried 6-0. Item 12, editor boring word action. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education appoint the district's Director of Instructional and Informational Technology, Kristi Mazzano, as the district's Chief Information Officer and Data Privacy Officer effective February 17, 2022. They have a motion. Moved by Mr. Cassidy. Seconded by Mrs. Malice. Discussion.
I got her already, and she's amazing.
She's absolutely amazing. Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Carried six zero. Item B, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the textbooks listed in your agenda. They have a motion. Moved by Mrs. O'Leiler. Seconded by Mrs. Malice. Discussion.
I should build this, I worked here a long time. But briefly, what's the process for this? It goes through a committee and goes through, what? I forgot the steps involved here.
The, so yeah, so as we go through textbook review, the department gets together and evaluates the different needs. So in this case, it's for the high school in this department. So they'll review a number of texts, and then they end up bringing it to the text review committee, and who sits on that is the number of board members that sit on that. And then they discuss it with them, and then they're put up for approval. Yep.
Great question, Mr. Blowers. Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Carried six zero.
You know, one thing, Mr. Blowers, any board member should feel free to ask to read the proposed textbook. So if you ever see one on the agenda for adoption and the spirit rules you, you should just contact Mr. Membretti and have a chance to read it. I mean, the three board members on the committee have that opportunity, but so does everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Brunson, good point. Item C, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education accept the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Natalie Dunn, technology teacher at the middle school effective June 30, 2022. Moved by Mr. Brunson. Seconded by Mr. Blowers. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Carried six zero. There are a number of items, workshops for ACASB and the Erie Two Voces Annual Meeting and the component vote date, please note, on April 27. Is there any other information to come before the board? They have a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mrs. O'Leiler. Seconded. Seconded by Mrs. Malice. Discussion. All in the favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Carried six zero. Thank you all for your late night.